Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna get ready to bring our meeting to order, if you will, at this time. We'll go ahead and start officially calling the meeting to order. Ms. Ray, would you please call the role of the city council?
Yes. The Honorable Mayor Mario Avery.
Present.
The Honorable Mayor Pro Tim Linda J. Davis.
Present.
The Honorable Alex Heath.
Present.
The Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
The Honorable Pat Pallant.
Present.
The Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
And the Honorable James Whitmore.
Family emergency.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, at this point, I'll ask Dr. Charles Davis from the Bountiful Blessed Church, is he... Come on up, sir, and would you... everyone, please stand for the invocation.
Is he here?
Oh, I thought it was him. Okay, sir, would you do the honors for us?
Certainly, if you would please bow with me. Father, it is again that we come before you grateful for the blessing of this another day. And as we gather to conduct the business of the city of Fairburn, we ask that you guide our discussions, deliberations, and all decisions made in this meeting. Let it be to the best interest of the citizens of Fairburn to promote health, safety, and welfare of all. But above all, Father, let it be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Bless these public servants as they go about their daily efforts. That you protect them, that they are able to serve well and capably. We ask all of this in the holy and precious name of your Son Jesus, as all who agree said, amen.
Amen.
Let the religion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I'm actually doing a presentation and proclamations in this case. Got a small presentation I just wanna bring right now. I wanna make sure that we're aware this week is actually Georgia Cities Week. And this week, we've already had some events that's already commenced that actually started on Sunday, and I'm gonna just go down a few pages. We started on Sunday. Sunday was actually a Fairburn Day at the Renaissance Festival, where many of our residents, a lot of our elected officials, as well as our residents citywide, were here at the festival, enjoyed a fun day at the Renaissance Festival. Monday, today, was actually a Coffee with a Cop this morning that commenced at Sierra's Breakfast and Lunch from 8:30 to 10:30. And it was called Meet the Fairburn Fire Department. It actually commenced from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock, just literally concluded tomorrow. For those of our residents, family, and friends that are in the Fairburn area, please meet, it's called the Fairburn Fit Night. If you're into physical fitness or you want to be fit, we would like to see you, we'd like to see you at the Frankie Honor Courtyard from 6:00 to 7:00 tomorrow night. Again, 45-minute workout-free session, healthy lifestyle vendors. And so, please meet, please, anyone, please help us spread the word as we celebrate Georgia Cities Week in various fashions. Also, this coming, excuse me. Actually, the logistics, you'll see that on tomorrow night. From 6:00 PM, introduction from Parks and Recreation Directive starts at 6:00. At 6:15, a hip-hop fitness workout. Again, please, anybody that wants to be fit, please come to this event, please. And then, of course, closing remarks at 7:00 PM. On Wednesday, Global Impact Academy, it will be the Fairburn City Council Chambers. These chambers, youth empowerment against violence. And again, they will actually conduct an actual council meeting sitting in these chambers and these seats. And so, again, please come out and help us support our youth as we integrate them in the silver service of our government. They just said a brief description to showcase the city of Fairburn's government services to promote civic actions among youth. High school students from Global Impact Academy will participate in their mock city council meeting on Wednesday. That will commence from 5:30 through 7:30 PM Wednesday at Fairburn City Hall. On Thursday, the City of Fairburn Education Fair will be located at the City of Fairburn Annex 40, Washington Street, literally one block down this street, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And the event description, the city will recognize intellectual wellness by hosting the education fair to promote ways for city employers and members of the Fairburn community to expand their unique knowledge and skills. Friday, we will actually have a spring cleanup. Again, that will commence at the 102 Howe Avenue from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. If you want to dispose of buck items, residents only. If you're a resident of Fairburn and want to dispose of any buck item, please bring your, go to 102 Howe Avenue from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The street department will be the leading that calls. And then, finally, on Saturday, April 29th, the Spring Shred Day located at Fairburn City Hall from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Free document shredding for all residents. Again, the street department will actually host that particular event. Then, I'm gonna yield to the assistant, the city administrator, because I want her to talk about the next event.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you Alleyway Canopy of Colors. What you will see before you is a presentation. Our installation is currently outside of the municipal court. This is in conjunction with Ardena Alley and Dash in the city of Fairburn. We announce Alleyway Canopy of Colors. It's a temporary, large-scale installation featuring 60 community-designed satin panels suspended over the heart of Fairburn. This 70-foot-long skyward installation will temporarily transform the downtown alleyway into a vibrant and engaging space for passerby and a destination for celebrating Fairburn's community, culture, and accomplishments during Georgia Cities Week. Just wanna share with you that this is a visual reflection from over 50 students, organization members, and club participants from local organizations such as Landmark Christian School, Girl Scout Troop 3802, and the National Black Arts Foundation to highlight the city and what makes the their community special. I wanna take this moment to thank the Arts Advisory Council and staff, because this was a vision in conjunction with Dash that we actually were able to bring to life. And so, we will be hosting an event. We plan to do maybe some food trucks and live music in the alleyway. This installation will be up until May 20th. So, we ask all members of council, as well as our residents, to please stop by, enjoy lunch in the alleyway under the canopy of colors. And you'll see more art events like this in Fairburn this year. So, this is just the beginning.
That's beautiful. Beautiful.
Thank you so much for that. The next, we'll have our public comment. 30 minutes will be available for public comments. Each speaker should be limited to three minutes. However, a speaker may transfer his or her three minutes to another speaker, but no speaker shall be permitted to speak for more than six minutes. Further an event, if there's more, how many, just before I can go further, how many speakers do I have?
We just have one speaker.
One speaker, so any issues raised at this time are generally referred to the city administrator for review. Responses will be provided at a later date. At this time, I'll ask our first speaker, or our only speaker, to come forward.
Mr. Derek Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and Fairburn Council. It's great to be with you all.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. My name is Derek Jackson, for those who may not know me, but I'm running for District 68. And it's important for the citizens in Fairburn to know that not all citizens in Fairburn will have an opportunity to vote, because the only district that impacts Fairburn is District 68 that's open to vote. And so, the other representative, which is District 67, Lydia Glaze, there is no voting for District 67. So, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to clear up any possible confusion. But so, those who need to know where their district lines are, because they changed, started this year, go to mvp.sos.ga.gov. And once you go there, ladies and gentlemen, you'll see if you fall in either District 67, or District 68, or District 65, which is Representative Mandisha Thomas. All right, and...
Would you repeat that website one more time for those...
Yes, sir, absolutely. The website, again, is mvp.sos.ga.gov. And that is the Secretary of State website, where all the citizens can plug in their information. It's a secure website, and then it will tell you your specific district. Then, once you go there, you can also see that there's only one precinct open right now in South Fulton. That's over at Flatsho's Library. And you can go there from April 24th through May 12th. And then, on May 16th, this special election day, there will be three precincts in South Fulton available for citizens in Fairburn to go and vote and make their vote, their voice be heard.
And if I'm correct, early voting actually started today?
Yes, sir. April 24th, today, early voting started today through May 12th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Again, this is all based on Senate Bill 202. We don't have enough time to talk about that. But it is from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Obviously, most citizens are working at those hours. And it will be open on Saturday, but closed on Sunday.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of council, at this point, we're now, can I entertain a motion to adopt the city council agenda?
So, so moved.
A motion that made by Mr. Heath, and that's second by Ms. Davis. Any questions or comments by council? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. As a council, you have before you approval of the city council minutes for the city council meeting that commenced on April 10th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments by council? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. We don't have a public comment, I mean, a public hearing or concern agenda. At this point, Ms. Ray, would you go ahead and read our first item for the agenda?
The first agenda item is Downtown Beautification Rotary Town Clock. The recommendation is requesting mayor and council approval to commission and install a Verden Post Clock within the downtown historic commercial district in an amount not to exceed $37,000. This will be presented by Economic Development.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished members of the city council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Economic Development presents the agenda item this evening, the Verden Post Clock, which was presented during the April 10th work session. During that work session, we discussed the vetting process, how the clock was identified as a, and also the process for commission and installation of the Verden Clock. It was determined that it is a sole source item, and the clock was reviewed also by our Art Advisory Council, a quasi-judicial review panel consisting of citizens and art experts for quality art design, landscape, and as an element of beautification and expansion within the downtown. It was also drawn from the existing LCI Downtown Plan or the Creative Place Making Strategy for projects for beautification and expansion. The item has been identified as a clock that would bring a historic element while bringing a focal point. The Art Advisory Council identified the Fairburn Blue as the color of choice, Roman numeral for the face. It is a four-face clock, solar-powered, that would be installed within the downtown historic district. The location that was selected or recommended to council is the area or the pedestrian nook outside of the Antique Mall. And it does, upon speaking, having a high-level conversation with our Public Works Director, it does fulfill the setback requirements. During the work session, we were asked by city council to verify the location, ensuring that that was the best location for that particular clock. We continued to be in discussions with our Public Works Director regarding the mounting of the device. The Verden Company will install the device, and that takes five to six months for commission, a day to install. The actual cement mounting will be done through our Public Works Department, who confirms that it will be an item out for bid that they will select after three written bids. I believe that addresses the questions of council. If there are additional questions regarding the installation and commission of the Verden Clock.
What I'll do is bring the item to the floor. Members of council, you heard the item read by the city clerk. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by, yes, ma'am.
You made the first motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, in this case, I thought it was you. It was actually Mr. Smallwood. Second by Mr. Heath.
Right.
Okay, any questions by council? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number three is opioid settlement, opt-in Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Teva, and Allergan. The recommendation is staff recommends that mayor and council ratify Mayor Avery's signing of the subdivision participation and release forms for CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allergan. The city administrator's office will present this item. Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We will defer to the city attorney who conducted the due diligence on the agreement, the settlement.
We're gonna let Amber Qualls, her research. We could do it from the mic. Speaking to the mic.
So, the mayor did sign last week. The deadline was April 18th to opt into a settlement agreement with the distributors of opioid medications, as well as some of the producers. So, with this opt-in, there's an opportunity for Fairburn to receive direct funds from the settlement agreement. And there's also additional funds that will come through the state. I did speak with the Attorney General's Office, and they're working on a MOU within the state that might change the rules of how that money is allocated. If not, the default under the settlement agreement is, as I stated, there would be, I believe it's 0.05% of the funds will come directly to the city of Fairburn, and then the majority of the funds will come through the state. This is money that the city of Fairburn can use for specific things that are outlined in the agreement. And those include training opportunities, so you can utilize the police department to... There's also, so anything dealing with opioid use and abuse, dealing with either prevention, intervention, or treatment. So, there's an opportunity for the city of Fairburn to contract with the county and to get services for opioid, again, prevention or treatment.
Okay. Did you want to air before I bring you to the floor?
I would simply add that there's growing awareness, or has been for several years now, about the opioid crisis in our country. And Fairburn is not immune. The police department has to deal with this issue from time to time. This opportunity via this settlement will give us the possibility of receiving funds that we can then allocate specifically to opioid impacts in the city. And so, we would ask mayor and council to consider approval.
The council, you had the item read before you from the city clerk's office. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Pat Pallant, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heath. Any questions by council? I have a question. My question is gonna be indicated that if we wanted Fulton County, if that was a consideration for Fulton County to execute it or to execute... I wanna get that clarification, which you mentioned.
All right, to clarify, and I did ask the Attorney General's Office that question as well. So, my understanding is Fairburn doesn't have some of the organizations themselves, for example, like different social work-type services. But that's something where on the county level, if they have those resources, there would be an opportunity, and it would fall under the agreement, for Fairburn to contract with either private providers or on the county level to supply different services to the city. And one thing that I failed to mention is two things. One, the settlement agreement is something that, of course, the city is signing away their right to sue for opioid abuse, of course, into perpetuity. And the other thing is, although the agreement was signed by you, Mayor Avery, the agreement has a second phase, which that deadline is May 18th, for the different distributors, the defendants, basically, to see whether enough cities have opt-in to proceed with the funding disbursement. If enough cities have not, then, of course, it's back to the drawing board. But it's similar to another signing, and those funds did go forward. So, this is likely to as well.
When you talk about the number of cities in this case, are we talking about...
Nationwide.
Oh, nationwide, okay, wow. That's, you're talking about actual city municipalities, that's 19,000 something.
Correct, because there's already been a state phase, and Georgia has already opt-in at the state level. So, they just needed to see whether cities are on board at the local level.
Okay.
What's the threshold for cities? You know, how many have to sign?
Oh, I don't know that, actually. If that's something that I'm happy to follow up on and...
Well, I mean, I guess that's kind of a requirement, right? Because if enough, whatever that number is, then we don't have access to the funds, right? Is that what you said?
Yes, it's a possibility, again, that the distributors can decide not to go forward with the settlement. But again, it's already looking good, because the states, there's enough states that have already opted in. It's just the municipalities under the states that they're looking to also see what percentage come in.
Then, is that a separate pot, that is a separate pot of money, yes?
It's for the total pot of money as far as the settlement agreement's concerned, but the way that money is dispersed, to answer your question, there's a certain amount that goes to cities directly, if it reaches the second phase. But the majority of the money will go to the states to then disperse how they see fit.
I think it is relevant that we know that threshold, because those dollars would be beneficial to the city. And there are various avenues to educate other cities, you know, about this opportunity through, you know, national legal cities, the association of counties, et cetera, if the number, if we're not meeting the threshold.
Yes, and I'll try to see if I have the information on my computer.
All right, thank you. Is there a deadline? Yes, I mean, that's all. I just think that's, it's probably in our best interest to know that and to do what we, since you, you know, you signed that, Mayor, and you asked for ratification of it, but there's no guarantee if there's no, if not enough cities sign on. And so, we wanna do what we can to encourage that.
And know that I don't know that we can control whether any other cities sign on. If they don't, just don't get the money.
No, I understand that, but there are avenues, and because, oh, this is an issue that's been discussed for a very long time. And I know that the national legal cities has done a lot of work with municipalities all over the country. I don't think it would be an issue, but, you know, I'd like to know.
We'll get an answer.
Thank you. No, I'm good, I'm good.
Any other member of council? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. Next item.
Item number four is the 2023-2024 Property and Liability Insurance. This is for mayor and council to approve Tanner Blue and Malouf Incorporated to maintain property and liability insurance with travelers effective May 1, 2023, for an estimated annual premium of $589,981, which includes an amount of $1,478 for a prorated price for a 30-day extension for the cyber liability premium and execute all documents necessary to bind coverage for the 2023-2024 policy year. The city administrator will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have with us Mr. Steve Malouf, who has been working with us through this process to renew our general liability insurance. So, we're glad he's here this evening. I'll defer to Mr. Malouf and allow him to go through the presentation he has put together and then add some comments as we conclude.
Mr. Phillips. Mr. Mayor, City Council, good to see everybody again.
Yes.
Honored to serve the city. This is 17th year, starting 17th year, I've been working with the city and certainly appreciate the opportunity. You hopefully have seen the presentation that we put together, was sent in a week or so ago. And we're still working on the cyber. As you saw, we're doing a extension on that, and we'll get to that in a moment to speak about that. But Ryan McLaughlin is my assistant, has been with me the entire time. He's been with me about 20 years and been working with the city day to day. You know, we've had a really good history with the city, and the city's worked really well with us over the years. And I think as your agent, we've worked really hard to maintain good rates, better than market throughout those years. As a matter of fact, we've been between minus 20% on a renewal, up to about 13% increase over the years. And, you know, the market fluctuates with insurance, not only from a losses perspective, but also just from a supply and demand market perspective. This year, as you may have seen in your presentation, we're delivering a 29% increase. And unfortunate that we're delivering that, but it's the culmination of a really tough insurance market for the last few years. If, you know, if your own personal insurance is probably, you've seen some of that. And if you're a business owner, you've seen increases in your premium, as well as extremely tough losses year for the city. Over the last five years, which is what the insurance companies are generally looking at, we're running at 108% loss ratio. So, eight cents for every dollar is a loss for the insurance company. And then, on top of that, that didn't include, that's just a pure loss ratio. It doesn't include their expenses, their profitability, any of those kinds of things. When you mix that in, you add about another 35%. So, it's been very difficult. As a matter of fact, this year, I was concerned that we were gonna, that travelers was gonna stick with us, and they have. And they've been a great partner with the city. They're the largest insurer of municipalities in the country. They're a great partner of ours. We have over $200 million in premium with them. And so, we were able to get them to stick with us on the renewal. We also went out to many, many markets to see if there were alternatives, and really just couldn't, no one wanted to step up for anywhere close to the premium we were gonna, that we ended up at. So, with that all being said, I'm certainly happy to talk about any of the details within the policy. But the policy is pretty much the same as it's been year after year. It's a very comprehensive municipal insurance policy. I think the policy has stood up to claims that we've had over the years, and it's been a good policy for us. One thing I would suggest is that we engage travelers and their loss control folks to get more involved with us on a more granular level and see if we can nip the, some losses in the bud. And we also have internal resources within our agency to assist with that. And I would suggest that y'all allow us and travelers to get more involved, because if we don't kind of light the ship on the losses, it's gonna have a similar story next year. And so, with that being said, I'll open it up to any questions you might have for me.
I'll just bring the item to the floor, and then we can have discussion. But I've got a few questions as well. Members of council, you've had the item read before you for the 2023 Property and Liability Insurance from the city clerk. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's made by Ms. Jones, and the second by Ms. Davis. Any questions or comments by council?
Yes.
I'll start with Ms. Jones, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the points you made about the loss ratio. Yeah, we had some major losses this past year. So, I was not surprised by the increase. Could you just state, if you could, what's the average market increase? How does our 30% increase compare on average to the market?
Yeah, the market in general, it's a bit, it's high. 10% to 15%, 20% is what we're seeing in the market just for profitable companies, companies that are at a, you know, 0% to 25%, 30% loss ratio. We're delivering those for great performing accounts. Accounts with losses... Uh, accounts with losses, um, this is, this would be market or even better than market. We're seeing some doublings, we're seeing fifty percent increases. Uh, the, uh, last several years, the, um, uh, natural disasters have been up. Um, the other thing, uh, is interesting, an interesting point, I think, for, for everybody here to, to hear is that, um, Georgia has, uh, the distinct honor of being the number one judicial hellhole, is what it's called now, in, in, uh, in the, in the country, from number six a few years ago. And now we're number one mainly due to DeKalb County and, um, Fulton County, uh, what were they called, nuclear verdicts that are happening as a result of, uh, liability claims. So insurers are backing out of the state of Georgia. So we do, uh, we work on a national basis and so, uh, on a national basis, it's on a higher, it's certainly on a higher level, but the, um, for Georgia and the kind of losses we have, like I said, I, I'm just, was happy to get a, get a vote.
Uh, well, that is, um, very, um, important information that you provided.
Yes.
Uh, thanks for that. And also thank you for, um, the invitation for the city to work with you as well as Travelers, um, to see what things we can do to mitigate, um, any future losses, um, you know, to at least, uh, maintain premiums, um, and hopefully reduce them. That being said, um, what has Travelers said thus far? I mean, other than, I mean, the, the losses, um, one being the courthouse, um, you know, unavoidable, um, what were some of the others or what is it that Travelers said in their evaluation, um, of our, uh, our, our losses or how we operate that was the concern to them?
You know, I, I, I'm not sure exactly what was said from a standpoint of, I mean, they, the conversations I've had with the underwriters were just said it's, you know, they, they look at dollars in and dollars out and that it's just not been a profitable, um, situation for them. As far as, uh, you know, having engagement from the city, uh, with loss control, you know, they're, they, they want to engage the city to do that. There hasn't been, uh, a whole lot of that done over the last few years from a traveler's standpoint. And, uh, I think it's just time that, that everybody starts looking, looking at the dollars and, and seeing that, you know, they can't, you know, this, this last year was a, was an outlier year. You had nearly two million in losses and that throws off the, obviously throws it off. Um, so, uh, that raised some eyebrows and, uh, the suggestion that they want to put some money and some time into being out here with, uh, with the different departments.
Well, I, I appreciate that and, and thank you so much. And I look forward to hearing, um, what, uh, recommendations or suggestions they have, uh, that the city should, um, do in order to mitigate our losses. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other member of council? Go ahead, Ms.
Yes, hi, how are you?
Great, thanks.
I, I just wanted to know under, um, location schedule number page seven, there are some locations that's highlighted under, um, building and contents, uh, the passenger depot, freight depot and the house and three hundred acres of land and Old Campbell. Are those, can you just share what those highlights are about?
So the highlighted locations are not included in the blanket building limits. And so what, we've tried to build your program, so we have a blanket limit that sits over all your locations. That way if one location happens to be a little bit low, you guys don't get penalized. These specific locations are just special in nature, which, uh, they're harder to insure. And so for that reason, the specific limits that are shown on our schedule are what is designated for those locations.
Okay, where are those limits for these locations?
Uh, they're on the schedule. Um, so what's listed there that's highlighted, that is their actual limit.
Okay, okay, got you, okay.
What do you mean by blanket, if, if that's a term you haven't heard before, is that all of the other locations are bound in together?
Right, I got, yeah, I got that. Thank you, I just needed to know.
If, if you don't mind, I was actually, she had the same question I did, I guess, I'm sorry, I lost my page, I thought it was on page nine. No, they actually identified the addresses, I, actually, most of them, a lot of them where I see in the downtown area. And so I was just trying, I was just, for clarification, for purposes, I was trying to figure out specifically, what's downtown that makes it, in this case, I guess, in insurance work, uh, not, not insurable? Am I saying it right, am I saying it correctly? The ones that, the ones that were actually highlighted, it, it, there's another page, yeah, I'm assuming they're the same one, but there was another page and I lost it, I apologize. It had the actual addresses of those.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we had those listed out separately on the, uh.
Yeah, okay, my question, I mean, I was just trying to, I was, actually, she asked the same question, I was trying to figure out what is so vulnerable and makes them uninsurable almost.
Yeah, it's just more difficult to ensure. I mean, there, there are older, um, buildings, I mean, when you, you talk about, uh, you know, the house on Bohannon Road, I mean, it's, it's an unusual structure. It's not just your standard office building. So, um, that just, it takes a little bit more underwriting to write and they're just not as willing to extend blanket limits over those.
And so one of the addresses I saw was at Dunkin Park, was that because of that turf field?
Uh, yes, so the turf field, um, we have a special, uh, limit for the turf field, it's a million dollars. Uh, typically those are very difficult to ensure, um, but it's something that Travelers has worked with us in the past in order to build it into the program. So that, the turf field has its own specific limit as well.
Got you, okay. And then you also mentioned that, um, kind of, I guess, in, in your presentation, sir, about DeKalb, DeKalb County and Fulton, uh, basically like a nuclear. And I apologize for those that may not, I have, I've had insurance license, I, I know, I understand the language you're saying. I'm trying to make sure they, uh, publicly can understand exactly what you meant by that.
Yes, sir. Okay, so nuclear verdict would be, as, as an example, um, you know, a, uh, somebody gets maimed or killed or, and there's a lawsuit, goes to a jury and, uh, you know, they, uh, they, they might've been trying to settle it for ten million dollars or whatever and the jury evaluates the claim and makes it a fifty million dollar claim. It pays out fifty million. So there's been a number of those where we've had them. And nuclear is a, just a term that's been used in the, in the marketplace. It's not anything specific, put it, or, or, uh, a real term in the insurance business, but it's just, uh, hyperbole for how bad some of the losses have been once they get to the jury. And, um, and there's been a number of, of those, uh, cases in Georgia that have just been significant, two hundred million, hundred million, fifty million. These claims that have, uh, really wrecked the insurance companies because they don't, they're not, you're not prepared for these type of losses.
And then my last question, you mentioned that about what, you know, internal resources, I guess, that will help us as a government, when you refer to Fairburn or just period to help, I guess, control our costs?
Yeah, so the, the insurance company has, uh, special, um, you know, employees within, within the company that are, uh, what we call loss control consultants. They'll come in here and they'll look at the buildings and they'll look for hotspots within electrical panels. They'll look for, uh, ways to potentially not have losses. Uh, they also look at slip, trip, fall hazards, things like that where people could get hurt or where, where the city might become a target for a claimant to, to make a claim against the city. Um, there's other things such as driving, driver training, driver criteria, things like that, that we go through. Back, uh, several years back, we did work on, um, with, with Travel, I think it was Travelers that we did it with, where we, uh, with the, um, the, uh, law enforcement liability. You know, we had folks come in and help, uh, we really, really made an impact on that. We were having a lot of losses in law enforcement liability ten years or so ago and that's really turned around. So just really what, uh, best thing that can be done is just front of mind discussion with employees, with supervisors, where we have safety talks, where we, uh, helping, help show different ways to, to not get hurt on, you know, at, at, at the city and to find, um, places where, where losses could happen, such as thermal, thermal imaging of buildings and things like that.
And then one last one, this is, and, and, Mr., and you can tell me, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm not speaking out of line. Is cy, this, this also inclusive of cybersecurity, is that?
Yes, they are working through, we're continuing to work with Stephen, Ryan.
That's still in the.
Finalize that as a process. We were able to extend that for an additional thirty days. And so there is a kind of placeholder number that's in there now, but that will refine as we get final numbers on the cybersecurity. Uh, we've been working with them, as you know, they've been with the city many years, uh, for several weeks now through this annual renewal. So we've already started some dialogue around having Travelers to come in and provide some of that analysis that we've talked about this evening. Uh, you've seen the know before training, which is a cybersecurity effort mandatory for all city employees and staff to participate in. We started, uh, a process for defensive driving classes, which we will implement in the upcoming year, as well as, um, specialized equipment training for utilities and streets and some of those departments that utilize specialized equipment. And so we're looking at every opportunity to mitigate cost. Um, but I would also point out, and I think Steve's already made this point, that to some degree, uh, the previous year was somewhat of an outlier. Um, and so that is not the norm for Fairburn, um, but not unlike what we see when we renew our insurance for health, when you have an anomaly with several large claims, which was the case in this instance, it will skew your loss ratio. And so we have to work through that. It's a five-year running, uh, kind of calculation when they look at our loss ratio. So we'll have to live with that for some time, but it will eventually resolve itself. And in the meantime, we'll do everything we can to mitigate the things we can control. Um, you know, fender benders, there are some, uh, settlements and things of that nature. And so we're looking at every avenue to try to make sure we manage those costs downward so it doesn't drive our rates up any further.
Right, and then one last, one last question, sir. In terms of the five years, is, in this case, is five years from twenty-three back or is, I'm, I'm trying to figure out at what point will twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two be out of our, be out of our range? Cause this, I mean, it's, it's a detriment.
Assuming nothing else happens in the.
Right, unfortunately, we're gonna have that one for five years, starting now.
Starting at one, yeah.
Yeah, okay, got you.
But you know, we're, you know, the market, a lot of times what we have is a, a, a good insurance market, I think you'll, if you looked at history, is we, we've brought decreases even when we've had years of, of bad losses. If, you know, it's a, it's a market, uh, a fluid market and, you know, right now, there's just not a lot of, uh, a lot of carriers in the municipal space.
Right.
And we'll get some that'll come back in and that'll drive prices down and we'll push them down as much as we can and leverage Travelers or, or move the business. So, um, you know, it doesn't mean that we're gonna be here forever. I mean, if we, if, if the carrier sees, uh, a great effort and they, they think that they can make money on the business going forward, they'll, they'll take a flyer on us.
Got you.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Um, yes, you mentioned about, um, the astroturf, um, at the football field. Okay, so could you state why, um, um, that's a specialty item that you have a cap on? And, um, do you have recommendations for, um, replacement? Or what's your preferential, um, material for, uh, football fi, fields of any kind other than astroturf?
So really what it comes down to is insuring any kind of just land type property is, you don't insure land typically. And so if you had a grass field, you wouldn't have any coverage on the football field. Uh, sometimes there's some outdoor property limits that can pay for, you know, some landscaping type items, but not a million dollars, nothing to replace a football field. Uh, but since you have the artificial turf, that is a product, it's not just landscaping. And so that was our argument in order to get Travelers to cover it or perils that normally there would be no coverage. So I, it's not really a factor of it being astroturf or field turf or however, uh, that's driving, how they're insuring it. It's more, it's an accommodation to insure it at all because fields in general, like your baseball fields at the parks, they're not covered, uh, if they get damaged. You have coverage for the light posts, you have coverage for the second stands, you don't have coverage for the actual grass.
I see.
It's, it's a specialty item.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
Does any other member of council have any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, that motion carries. At this time, we'll go to the finance, finance director's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Okay, I'll proceed. Um, I want to bring our, our financial report as of March thirty-first. This is our six-month report. Uh, the city of Fairburn, um, concludes our six months of operation with a three-point-six million dollar net cash flow in our general fund. Uh, we have seven point, seventeen point one in revenue, thirteen point five million in expenditures. As of March thirty-first, we have collected seventy-one percent of our year-to-date revenues that we budgeted. Um, to date, the city has only expensed about thirty-seven percent of the budget. Um, local sales tax, property tax represents about sixty-three percent of our general fund revenue, loss represents about fifteen percent of our general fund revenue. For the month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, our overall budget is twenty-three million, seven hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. Our year-to-date revenue again is sixteen million, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars. For the month of March, we collected eight hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and that, um, our year-to-date number that represents seventy-one percent of our revenue. So through the first six months of the fiscal year, we have collected about seventy, seventy-one percent of our revenue. Year-to-date expenditures, um, are totaling eight million, nine hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars, which is thirty-seven percent of our expense, um, budgets. Our property tax revenue, we have collected ninety-five percent of our property tax revenue. So we billed out twelve million, four hundred nine thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars. There it is. Sorry about that. One more.
You get it.
Thank you. So we billed out twelve million, four hundred nine thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars. Our, um, collection rate again is ninety-five percent, that's eleven million, eight hundred six thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars. For our enterprise funds, um, we concluded our six months, we're roughly about nine hundred thousand in, in net cash flow. Um, we have generated ten point one million dollars in revenue with nine point two million dollars in expenditures. Um, to date, the city has collected about forty-seven percent of the revenue that we budgeted for our enterprise funds. And that's about, um, we've expensed about forty-five percent of our budget that we budgeted for expenses. For the overall budget for our enterprise fund, we budgeted twenty-one million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars. Year-to-date revenue is ten million, eighty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars. For the month of March, we collected one million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars. Year-to-date, again, that number is forty-seven percent for our year-to-date revenue in our enterprise fund. So through fifty percent of the year, we're about forty-seven percent on our revenues and about forty-five percent on our expenses. Our expenses for the, through, um, the month of March, nine million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. This is conclude the financial report? Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Financial Director, would you do me a favor? Would you go back to the first three slides that was, as I say? I just, I may give you, I'm, I'm sorry to ask you to do it over again, it was just more, I just want to make sure folk can see the documentation of what you were actually presenting.
Absolutely. And I will go through those, all three slides. For the general fund, through six months, we have three-point-six million dollars in net cash flow. As you can see, we collected seventeen point one million dollars in revenue with thirteen point five million in general fund expenditures. We have collected seventy-one percent of our year-to-date revenues. To date, the city has expensed about thirty-seven percent of our expenditure budgets. Our real property tax represents about sixty-three percent of our general fund revenue and our loss represents about fifteen percent of our general fund revenue. The general fund for the month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, you can see here our year-to-date revenue, sixteen million, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars. And for the month of March, eight hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars collected. Year-to-date, we have collected seventy-one percent of those revenues that we budgeted.
Is any member? Does any member of council have any comments or questions about the financial report?
I apologize for the technical snafu.
No, no problem. Okay, seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am honored to present to you a summary of the city administrators' reports for the month of February and March. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see the report in your agenda packet. Wanted to take a moment to highlight a few of the administrative and operational activities for those months. I'd begin by sharing with you and our residents something that the city should be particularly proud of, and that is that we are building a first-class, an experienced staff of employees here in the city. I am honored to work with a team of real professionals who are doing an excellent job on behalf of the city, and we are continuing to move in that direction to bring on folks who are experienced and knowledgeable to help aid in providing services to our residents. Highlights for the months of February and March, we had our Black History Month Artist Market and African American Inventors exhibit took place in the month of February. And at the, it showcased Caribbean, African, South American, Native, and American art. We did that at the Fairburn Annex and had a really successful event there. Economic Development participated in the Eritropolis South Fulton Catalytic Site Bus Tour, promoting commercial real estate space within the city of Fairburn. This is a bus tour that Eritropolis sponsors every year to bring different businesses and economic development professionals for a tour through several cities, and Fairburn was one of those, to help to continue to grow our economic base. The Fire Department was awarded an EMT Paramedic Training Grant from Atlanta Technical College, which was a good step in the right direction for our fire department. We also recognize in the month of March Women's History Month, which was a citywide recognition for March of this year, a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and to also express our gratitude and appreciation to phenomenal women that are part of the city of Fairburn employees and to on our own very city council. Also, we completed the 2023 Open Enrollment Education and Benefit Election for all of our staff here in the city. They were able to take place and complete during the week of March 20th and through the 24th. And in doing so, we launched a new online self-service benefits module, allowing employees to make their 2023 benefit elections utilizing an employee navigator. Parks and Recreation continued their outstanding work with a mother-son-and-father-daughter sneaker ball with 50 participants, where parents showed up with their kids, dressed in their finest, with their best sneakers on, and it was quite the show. That was followed with Parks and Recreation. They did a Medicare onsite counseling.
Sir, yeah, I was, I was going to ask you, were you able to show the people that are watching, do you have this that you're reading from in the presentation?
Yes, the document.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we can pull that up. And it's online as well, for those who may want to, but I'll see if we can pull it up So as we're pulling that up.
Okay.
Parks and Recreation also worked on a, or performed, put together a Medicare onsite counseling for seniors here in the city. They not only do engaging activities for both youth and seniors and everyone in between, but that is a high-value opportunity as well. Bringing knowledge about Medicare onsite here in the cities for our seniors was a really positive effort that we were able to do during the month of March. The Parks Master Plan, which is going to be a central effort for us this year, the RFP has been completed, was done in the month of March, and we are currently finalizing the selection to present to council at an upcoming council meeting. So that process is moving forward as well. The entire Code Enforcement Division under the management of Director Denise Brookins in Planning and Zoning and our new Code Enforcement Manager, they attended the Georgia Association of Code Enforcement Spring Conference, GACE, which is the statewide organization for code enforcement. They were able to take classes and seminars, additional training, and get best practice by connecting with other code enforcement officials from across the state. We have seen a market increase in our effectiveness in that code enforcement division. We still have work to do in that area, but it is certainly moving in the right direction. Planning and zoning staff was invited to speak on a panel at the Georgia Planning Association Spring Conference. And so we were glad to see that our professionals are in demand to speak at other organizations. In addition to that effort, we initiated through the Police Department our community-oriented policing section. And so Officer DeSantos is setting that up, is doing an outstanding job, reaching out and connecting not only to various parts of our community, but our business community as well. Had a really good conversation with Chief Pizdlo this morning at our Coffee with a Cop event about how we can continue to promote cops and connect to various portions of our city. So we're excited about the launch of that effort as well. We implemented our housing allowance with your approval as council members and across both of our public safety agencies and our referral bonus programs. Both are going really, really well. We've had eight officers, I know, in the Police Department that have signed up for the housing allowance. We will look to have a discussion with Mayor and Council through our FY24 budgeting to see if we can expand this effort. This was a pilot effort, but it has been very fruitful and has really done well throughout the initial pilot of the program. The old Campbell County Courthouse, we've completed the post-fire asbestos abatement and debris removal. That work has been completed. We are now still working with travelers for additional information as we move forward toward an insurance settlement. And so that is ongoing, and I would encourage residents to stay tuned as we get additional information. There was a lot of activity early on as we were going through the abatement and getting all of the asbestos out of the building, but we are now going through the administrative part of the process. And so I know I spoke with at least one of our residents, says, hey, I don't see anybody working out there. And so I want to let our residents know that it is still an issue that we are focused on, but we have to work through the insurance issues and the administrative details as we plan next steps. And so there will be additional information to come. The facility condition assessments that was approved by council has been completed. We've looked at every city facility with an outside consultant that has looked at all systems, the complete shell of the building, as well as all systems interior to the building. And we have had an opportunity to provide some of that information to you as Mayor and Council. Again, we will talk more about how we move forward to ensure that we maintain city facilities and protect our taxpayer investment in those facilities. And so that concludes the highlights I have, and I apologize that we just got the report up just as I was completing. Again, I would remind all of our residents that this is online, and so everything we do is transparent. So if you did not get a chance to see us, see the report as I was speaking to it, I provided those highlights which are at the beginning of the city administrator's report. But then it is followed by a detailed departmental presentation from each department in the city. And I would encourage any of our residents that have an interest to please go and read through the report, get that information, and our office is available to answer any questions and provide additional details as may be needed. And with that, I will conclude my report and see if there are any questions I could answer.
Does any member of council have any questions about the report that was, that was written or read?
A lot was done.
And, okay, that being said, no questions with the report? Okay, with that being said, we'll now go to City Council comments. I'll start with Mayor Protem.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank the mayor, admin office, and all staff for a very productive retreat. It was extremely organized, informative, professional, focused, and we had a little bit of fun. So I, I really enjoyed the retreat. We got a lot done. We were very intentional, and we were very authentic. And I really appreciate that because that's the way you do business, the way I see it. And that's it for me.
Mr. Heath?
Ditto. I had, I had a great time. And like I say, the information provided answered a lot of questions that I had had without, you know, it being like a one-on-one where you, in your conversations, you may have a, a, a train of thought loss or something. Everybody was there to hear the same thing. So everybody's on the same page, and I like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back to Mayor.
I've got one more thing. I don't know how I had it right here, but kudos to everybody that was involved in the Fairburn Youth City Council kickoff. Oh, my goodness. It was awful. Parks and Recreation Administration staff, I want to thank you so much. We've been trying to do this for the last five years. Not only do you have everything outlined, mission statement, vision statement, the requirements, the leadership summit is kicking off in June of this year. I, I'm just so overflowed by this, and I really appreciate you all really focusing on this because our youth need it, you know? And my hope is that they will get so involved in the community affairs, in leadership capabilities, also in city council, you know? Well, let me just speak for myself. City council is not getting any younger, so we need.
Speak for yourself.
We need, I just, I said that. Did you hear me? I prefaced that.
Two.
I prefaced that. We're not getting any younger, and we really do need to, you know, focus on our youth and, you know, share information with them and let them experience things so, you know, we can get some youth up here as well.
All right, yes.
Mr. Ulysses.
First name, huh?
Mayor, if I may, I, I just wanted to take a moment to highlight Ms. Scott, our Parks and Recreation Director, who does an amazing job. And also Tasha Mosley, which some of you may not have met, she's our new programming professional.
I met her the other day.
She does an outstanding job. Has won awards from the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association for programming previously. And so, again, we've just got some really outstanding people, and they've put together that youth council effort, and we're excited about it.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Pat Peller?
Yeah, they've said it all.
Okay, Mr. Smartwood.
All right, I'll echo the, just kudos and thanks for the wonderful retreat. It was informative. I told Mayor, not many places I'd rather be than at home on a Saturday, but to be with my colleagues all day, eight hours on a Saturday, and I'm laughing about city business, oh, that was a good retreat.
It was.
So I will echo what they said, as well as I will say, oh, my goodness, I'm so sad that I will not be here Wednesday, I think it is, when the, the.
Global Academy.
Global Academy. I, I still work, so I'll be in Nashville starting tomorrow, won't come back till Thursday on my job. So I just want to say, Global Impact, I know y'all are going to do a great job. Please tape it so I can see it, see them doing our job, mock up here. And the other thing, I just want to say, kudos to whoever always brings that presentation in the work session, those type of things for us, because I see that as the biggest thing going forward for our youth. You always talk about our youth. You talked about our youth, not only with that gang law that just came out at the state level, as well as this. What now we're going to have to do is educate our youth about what's out there for them. And I see State Rep. Jackson here, and I know he, he's a soldier on that same front at the state level. So we really, really have to acquaint our children with what's out there for them. And so I applaud us always bringing those people here and all of that because, I mean, you don't know it's a law until it's a law. So that's what I'll just always say in going forward. Let's just even do more of a job with that on all facets, whether it's rape, whether it's gangs, whether it's drugs, whatever. Let's as Fairburn acquaint our youth with that, and I'm down for the struggle too because that's, that's my area. I love that. Thank y'all.
And I'll go to Ms. Hattie Porter Jones.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I too want to echo the sentiments expressed regarding the retreat. We got a lot done, and we did have a good time. And this is the second year in a row, so that's saying something. Because usually the honeymoon doesn't last that long. So, yeah, yeah. So, thank y'all for that. Yes, so we, we did accomplish a lot. And so thank staff for that. I also want to say thank you and kudos to the entire City of Fairburn team for the fantastic Third Friday, our kickoff that happened. It was fantastic. We couldn't have asked for better weather. And you guys made Fairburn look good. We had a lot of guests who were not Fairburnites who commented all night, several times, about, I didn't know if everyone was doing all this, or, you know, how clean things were. You know, it's those little details that make all the difference in the world. So thank you so much for that. And then I also want to say congratulations to the kickoff for the youth council. Yeah, that is long overdue, and it will have such a huge impact, both at the annual convention at Georgia Municipal Association, as well as the two meetings of the National League of Cities. Cities bring their youth council to those events, and they have special programming just for them. And it's just an outstanding experience for them. That being said, the fall meeting of the National League of Cities is in Atlanta this year, so whatever we need to do to, I know we're just kicking off, but at a minimum, have a day's presence at NLC, but I hope we can do more. So let's, let's talk about that and strategize on how we can make that happen. So congratulations, Mayor Protem Davis, on that, because I know you've been working on that. So, thank you.
Okay. And I've just got a few comments. Again, you heard former State Representative Derek Jackson mention for clarification purposes during his public comment about there's an special election in the City of Fairburn for the, to fill the inconceit about the loss of our former State Representative Tish. And so, but I want to make sure that you understand that early voting actually, early voting actually started today. So, and again, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, what's the, what's the date of the election is to make sure I'm accurate? May 16th. And I just want to make sure, and I'm, I'm repeating the website that was asking our residents, every Fairburn resident does not vote in this election. I need to make sure that's very clear, very clearly. I need you to go to nvp.s.
M, m, m. My bad.
Again, MVP.sos.ga.gov for you to verify if you're a Fairburn resident, if you are authorized to vote in the special election that actually started early voting today. So again, because of that, district falls a lot into Fayette County, but a small segment of Fairburn, so I just want to make it real clear for those of us that, please go check that website to make sure if you're eligible to vote in this election, please go vote. Also, again, you heard us mention the Georgia Cities Weeks that actually started this past Sunday and will go through Saturday. Please look at the different events that we will actually have as a city from, from our youth coming here Wednesday night until physical fitness tomorrow night in the courtyard till bulk trash, until shredding material. Again, our goal, we're spending a lot of effort in Georgia Cities Weeks in our efforts to make sure that it literally lives up to the expectation for all residents and all people, in this case, people that are putting an effort and time into making sure that it's a success. Again, you've heard the members of council talk about the successful retreat just for, just for verification purposes. This is the document, I don't know if you can see how thick that is.
That's thick.
This is the document we went through for eight, it actually turned out to be 16 hours of actual information-driven retreat. Again, it was funny, but again, in our efforts, just for clarification purposes, the City Council goes on a retreat for us to discuss as, as letting the city as transparent as we can be with each other and. and, and, uh, the term I almost used publicly, but, uh, to get, to get, to keep it real with each other. Yeah. So, uh, just to, in our efforts to make sure we keep it completely transparent as it relates to what is it we need to come in agreement on. And also, uh, to look at the scenarios in the city that we, you know, it is not that we can't discuss it publicly. In this case, the city council, we're not the only government that does this. Every government, I hope, does, but many in the surrounding areas do this. In the effort to come to, come to terms, uh, wanna commend every, uh, employee department here that presented during the retreat. Uh, she's not here. Our, uh, our deputy, uh, City Attorney, uh, Ms. Serena gave us a scare of what we will do by law. I just want, I'm just. I don't know the way to put it. Uh, she gave us a great, great class, uh, probably one of the shortest classes, but it's the most impactful in terms of making sure we understood what is our fiduciary duty as relates to bonds and fi, and, and financial responsibility. Again, uh, would you please tell her publicly? That was a phenomenal workshop that she put on. And so, of course, with all the other, uh, also, uh, and again, without going in great detail, we, we actually, uh, was very clear about, uh, some agreements that we need to make sure as relates to, uh, protocols and public safety. In our efforts to make sure that the criminals understand that we mean business, but at the same time that we, that we don't scare our residents out. So I'm, I'm not gonna go further, I'm not gonna go any further with that. So I also wanna mention again, uh, our Third Friday, I wanna thank our staff, uh, just a phenomenal job with the staff. I also wanna thank our food vendors that actually sold out of food at the event. Uh, several of our businesses downtown, uh, and I wanna thank, uh, Casablanca that, in this case, that actually served for the city at this time, uh, that, uh, a lot of city council members from other city governments were here and just enjoy the event. And so again, I just wanna say thank you so much again to the staff that spent in Miss Civ, uh, I saw Civvy in there, the, all the people that came together to make sure that event was a, uh, please look on our website, uh, uh, to look at the future Third Friday events. I believe the next Third Friday, actually, in this case, we will be featuring Brick, uh, former, uh, well-known organization, uh, uh, music organization. Again, I'm Dottie Peoples, and then as you look further in the, in the year, we're looking forward to the Hispanic, Hispanic heritage much. So again, uh, and our goal to, uh, address that, I mean, diversity in our government and, uh, make sure that everybody understands that we're included. Uh, one of the things too, I wanna mention that we, uh, surprised a lot of our guests, uh, that, for those of you that have children at, uh, and let me, let me clarify that, kids, I guess, under six, uh, under eight, uh, that are, uh, we have inflatables and we have something for kids to do and enjoyment at those events so that while the parents are enjoying the music concert, your children actually will have, uh, entertainment as well. And so our goal at the end of the day is to create a family atmosphere, even at a, a music event. So with that being said, I just wanna thank everyone that was involved and thank you for tuning in tonight. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, we have a, an executive session tonight, uh, litigation, um, litigation matter, correct?
Yes, Jack's gonna do the honors.
Okay.
Before we move forward, however, we have a answer for council, uh, uh, Ms. Porter Jones. There's a open question on the opioid issue, so go right ahead.
Thank you, yes. Um, it was, she asked a question regarding, um, whether there was a percentage or threshold amount for the local governments, uh, which are referred to as subdivisions. Uh, out of the five defendants, only Walmart has an objective, uh, threshold, which is eighty-five, more than eighty-five percent of the, um, subdivisions that both have current litigation, um, and that they would again cease that litigation, and eighty-five percent or more of subdivisions that do not have pending litigation. Um, all of the other defendants, the other four, uh, do not have an express threshold. It just states that they have to, uh, uh, they have the sole discretion to decide whether they wanna move forward and they have to act in good faith. Uh, that's Tivan, Allegra, CVS, and Walgreens. And I can, um, put that, those terms in writing and I'll send those to the, um, to, uh, Mr. Phillips tomorrow.
Thank you so much for that update. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Can I entertain a motion to go in the executive session?
Don't move.
Mr. Heath, and then, uh, second by Ms. Davis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay. Members of council, we are now back in the regular session. Can I enter, uh, can I entertain a motion to come back in the regular, um, session?
Don't move.
Pat, uh, Pat, and then a second. Second, Mr. Heath, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries now. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Ms. Davis, second. Second. Second, second by Ms., um, Ms. Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.